One nation, un underdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've asked Commissioner Becky Wright to provide us with a legislative thought or prayer tonight.
Thank you Chair. I just have a quick quote I wanted to share by John F. Kennedy. I'm sure we've heard this several times. I'm always inspired by this quote because it's my thought of how I treat public service, volunteer work, anything that I do. He says, "One person can make a difference and everyone should try." And I think it's often overlooked that little things that we do can really make a difference, whether it's on the Planning Commission or just as public citizens coming to make comments or friends talking and educating other friends. I think we can all make a difference and everyone should try. And I'll just leave a quick prayer, or start a quick prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful that we could gather together today as a Planning Commission and we pray that we will have clarity of thought and purpose as we look to plan the future of Centerville and help us to do so objectively and in a way that is thought out and prepared. And we thank you for this opportunity to serve in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you Commissioner Wright. Next item of business is to review the minutes from the meeting held on July 27, 2016. I was not in attendance at that meeting, but I'll walk us through the minutes and if there are any comments, we'll just, we'll go page by page and if you could raise your comments please. Anything on page one? Page two?
Mr. Chair, on line 32, Manor, it's spelled M-A-N-O-R, I believe it should be Manor, M-A-N-N-E-R.
Which line is that, 32?
Yes.
Chair, with, I believe it's Lisa's red line edits. Is that?
Yes, I was just going to mention I had made some red line edits and I just recently posted them to Novus so you could see those. They weren't in there. So I had suggested the change to Cyro Steel, S-T-E-E-L, in two places on that, page two.
Which lines?
Page, or line 32 and 34.
I was also trying to remember exactly how the conversation went, but it said that it would, if we take off the industrial very high, it would just go to, it would automatically go down to the industrial high. And I don't think that's exactly how it was discussed. I could be wrong though. So I wanted some clarity, maybe just some discussion from commission members about that.
Oh, were you talking about line 29, it says if the IVH is eliminated, the default zone?
But that's, but that's talking about the zoning map. That's not talking about what we were doing right there. So I felt like that was a little bit confusing because that was something I was trying to understand that night, that if we removed that from the general plan, it doesn't automatically go to industrial high in the general plan. It just is not in the general plan as industrial very high.
Right, but we were also talking about the guidance, what the guidance of the general plan amendment could entail. And it lacked the ability to know what it should be. So it was mentioned that the IH zone could be a default.
So maybe we should change on line 30 instead of wood to could?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's better because I didn't want to assume that it would definitely go there.
Anything else on page two? Page three?
I've changed, in true Chair Hershey fashion, on line 30 I would like to add, seeing no one wanting to speak. Then we'll close the public hearing.
In the first paragraph where Mark Green is making his comments, I think it's important that we clarify that those things are his comments. For example, on line four, it said, "This is unfair." Either we say this is what he said or-
He feels that this is-
Yeah, he felt that this is unfair and then, what was the other one I was looking at? It will take significant money to make his relocation, he felt it would take significant money to make his relocation possible. In other words, I would just say he felt that this was, this is unfair as opposed to making it sound like... Maybe Kathy wouldn't be the commentator that's adjudicating whether this is fair or not.
Yeah, I think on both those you could just continue with the "he said."
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said, he said. I would agree with that. Or put the whole thing in quotations.
Yeah. Kind of the same thing of Richard Roe on line 18, I don't know.
He said, "This makes it difficult."
To turn over a business.
Yeah.
Anything else on page three?
I just had two minor nits. On line one, city is not capitalized, but we capitalize city throughout, everywhere else, so I would capitalize city. On line 20, it talks about the negative effects. I believe that should be effects.
Anything else on page three? Page four?
So here's where I had some substantial red lines. So that's why I wanted to add it to the packet so you can see those. But I did go back and listen to the, or I watched the video and just summarized my comments myself, so... I can represent those accurately, reflect what I said.
Would you, since some of us don't have the revised red line in front of us, could you just kind of walk us through what changes you made?
So... Currently says, "City Attorney clarified that Cyro Steel is a conforming use in the IVH zone." That wasn't quite what I said. And then, so I've added, "I asked how the Cyro Steel is currently non-conforming." Corey Snyder stated that they are not currently non-conforming. Ms. Romney then explained that Cyro Steel is a conditional use as a heavy industrial use in the industrial very high zone under the current table uses. So even if Cyro closed, another user could take over or the use or apply for a new conditional use under the current zoning. So that was the point I was trying to get across. And then I revised the language about this two-step process. Do you remember me talking about a two-step process? So I am adding, "She also reminded the commission that this is a two-step process. Right now, the Planning Commission is only reviewing the proposed general plan amendment to eliminate language regarding industrial very high uses and zoning in West Centerville. Even if the general plan amendment is adopted by the city, a separate application would have to be processed and considered for any zoning map amendment to change the actual zoning of the subject properties." So this was the point in the meeting where I was trying to clarify really what we're doing and just by changing the general plan, you're not changing the actual zoning. You're just changing the policy direction moving forward. So those are the changes with, basically replacing that paragraph.
Thank you. Anything else on page four?
Because I'm, sorry, because I'm nitpicky. On line 24, city is not capitalized.
Did Shaylin replace Debbie on the commission?
Yeah, she's-
In spirit, yeah.
With Lisa's changes, it is.
Okay, I was, yeah, I was going to double check. It's capitalized.
Page five?
And then I just had another insert there that I wanted to comment about that section 12430-3. As an addition.
All right. Anything else on page five? I've got one. I'm surprised that Shaylin didn't catch this one. On line 32, I think it's E-R-R rather than error.
And I would put quotations or hyphen, if you want to, on line 16, cart before the horse situation, just so that people understand that that's an idiom and not necessarily-
An actual cart and an actual horse.
Yeah. I mean, most people will get that, I guess, but, you know, just put it in.
Chicken before the egg. I think those are all fair game. All right, anything else on page five? Page six? Thank you for your comments and changes, especially Lisa's taking some time on this. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the minutes as amended.
Second? Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And Chair recuses due to the fact that he wasn't here. Okay. Thank you. Next item of business is a public hearing, Legacy Crossing Storage. It's my understanding, Corey, that the applicant has been in touch with you and has requested to postpone this to the August 24 meeting. Do you want to give us any further information on that?
Yeah, they submitted their final site plan application, but in discussion with different agencies and staff, they've decided to make some additional changes and wanted a chance to make those corrections before coming back before the commission.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and strike that from the agenda tonight. Anticipating it will be on the agenda for the August 24 meeting. Cue? Next item of business is the consideration of a proposed conceptual site plan and conditional use permit for Martha's Place, formerly 347 subdivision, on property located at 347 North 400 East for the purpose of a multifamily development consisting of one triplex and one single-family dwelling. This matter has also been scheduled for a public hearing. So we'll turn the time over to staff.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I take a second? Just to clarify real quickly for everybody, the last time that this property came before us, I recused myself for some ongoing personal interactions with the applicant. That has passed and we no longer have any ongoing transactions in the works. And so I am not recusing myself, just so that anybody doesn't wonder, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Staff?
Thank you. As you mentioned, this subdivision was the 347 subdivision. This came before us in May of this year. And looking at that, they wanted to do a flag lot and they've decided to forego that decision and to seek approval for a multifamily development. So what they're looking at is a triplex and then keeping the single-family home. The total lot acreage is .52, which means that it is 7.6 units per acre. And so within the ordinance, anything over, so the four units an acre is acceptable and then anything up, you know, past that, would have to have the conditional use permit. They can have up to eight units per acre with a conditional use permit. So once the final site plan has gone through and approved, then they desire to sell each individual unit, you know, for condominium. So they need to go through the planned unit development process. Again, as I mentioned, if we look at the table of uses, it does allow for the multifamily homes. However, one of the other things that is interesting is that a single-family dwelling also requires a conditional use permit, which is an interesting thing in that area. Also, the general plan, it acknowledges this as neighborhood one of the southeast Centerville and it breaks it down even more by stating that it's within the Centerville Elementary area. Now, one of the main reasons why this area was zoned into a residential medium, or at the time R2 is what it was, is it was to recognize that there's already a number of duplexes in that area along Parish Lane. And so if we, if you look at the map, along that whole Parish Lane area, along the south side, that's zoned residential medium. And this lot happens to actually just be a border, the border lot to residential low and medium. So the main goal for this area is to allow for the low and medium density residential developments to accommodate the different types of housing and especially within these larger blocks. So staff feels like this type of development is a good use for this specific type of a lot. It's also found within the Centerville Dual Creek Historic District. Now, we had a few people the last time come and they were concerned about the home. The home is an older home. It would be considered, you know, historic. It's older than 50 years old. And the applicant has at this point decided to retain the home and then build behind that the triplex. With this home being historic, they'd actually be able to, any changes or anything they do to the front, if they maintain that historic integrity, they can receive a percentage off of the building permit. In addition, if they construct the triplex behind the home in a historic fashion, they can also receive a certain percentage off of the building permit. Now, I put in the report that it doesn't necessarily, a lot of times when people think of historic, they're thinking of the center core of the district of, you know, the old rock style and very old-fashioned looking. However, they don't have to do that. There's other homes around there that, you know, could also have that same kind of a historic style. But that would be something that they could come in when they're ready to do that building permit. We could, we could look at that. So we, staff encourages him to, the applicant, to look at that and to try to be a little bit more sensitive to the architectural design of the area. If we look at the development standards, they do meet all of the setbacks. For a multifamily in an RM zone, you just take the large portion of the lot and then, you know, you'd have the setbacks, you know, in that, in that regard. So if you want to go to the site plan. So you have the front setback, which is the front of the lot, and then the rear setback, and then both of the sides. So each of the buildings don't need to meet the exact, you know, proportion of everything. It just, you kind of look at the whole thing, the whole project there. In addition to this, they also have to have landscaping. Now, they do have 40% landscaping, but that was the only detail we did have. So for the final site plan, they will need to have a landscape plan complete with the amount of trees and shrubs and percentages. And I did put that in the report of how many is required for the applicant to put in his project. Also, off-street parking, this is also a requirement. He does have the two-car garages. Also, the existing home has a driveway which can handle the two cars. And then there's also three visitor stalls on the west side. So this does meet the requirements of the ordinance of two spaces for two or more bedrooms is how, is how they do that. Also, with the lane going up the side, from 400 East, it's 85 feet long approximately. This is measured out to be the 24 feet, however, it's increased to the 27 feet as it gets closer to the driveways. All of this does meet the ordinance requirements for this private street. One thing that staff would recommend and request is that they put no parking signs along that north side as to make sure that they do have, you know, wide enough for fire access and safety. No screening was shown on the site plan. This will need to be indicated, showing a type of screening, you know, around the whole project if he so desires. Also signage wasn't up, wasn't, you know, shown on the plans. If he does desire to put some type of a sign that says, you know, Martha's Place, he's, you know, able to do that. It's just under a separate permit that he'll need to get that approved. But on the final site plan, he'll need to show, you know, where that, where that sign would be if he desires to do that. The next issue is utilities. Now, in the last meeting, there was some concern about the sewer lines. But if you remember, the sewer district did state that they did, what is it called?
Sleeve.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say something else. So they put a sleeve in there and it's, you know, as good as new, as they say. And so he, they're comfortable and confident that it won't have any more, more issues.
Just by way of commissioncy disclosure, last time, some residents, they share some laterals and a resident raised the issue that they felt it wasn't appropriate to share those laterals. We did get a copy of the sewer district's letter approving the use of those laterals and the capacity to sewer this project with a number of units. So we default to the sewer district since they're in charge of the sewer system.
Thank you. Other utility issues, one issue is there is a telephone line on the site plan and it looks like it's going right where the, one of the buildings are going to be. We'd request that the applicant just check with the utility company for that telephone line to see if they want it buried or what needs to take place, if they want to move it or, you know, if it's fine where it is. So we just need to clarify that to make sure everything is okay with that. Also, the final site plan will need to indicate public utility easements. One 10-foot on the front side and then two additional 7-foot easements. It looks like because of where the utilities are located, it's preferable if it's on the west and the south side. So the others would be the other two locations. This concludes the conceptual part of the review. I don't know if you want me to go on to the conditional use or if you want to discuss this portion first.
I think go ahead with your, with your presentation-
Okay, perfect.
And kind of ask all of our questions at once.
Again, as I mentioned earlier, is this does require a conditional use permit because it is over the four units. And they're again requesting 7.6 units per acre. And looking at the, what they're requesting, it does appear that this is in harmony with what is around the area. There is other multifamily dwellings there. There's duplexes. And so it's not something that's kind of out of sorts for this particular area. And then also with the single-family home, staff feels that by leaving that, they've really retained that appearance on the street frontage. One of the impacts that could initially be created is this home, as I mentioned, or this property is residential medium. And then the next one right next to it is residential low. It's also a little bit higher than the residential low property. So staff felt that there could be some negative impact to this, this property. And we are suggesting that a fence or a solid fence be put up along that side and then with additional trees, perhaps as they grow, they can, you know, kind of cover the building that's, that's behind the fences. So that would be a negative impact, however mitigated by, by that. Another concern that came up with the last one was traffic. Their street to 400 East is actually a collector road. So having three additional units really doesn't increase the traffic on a collector road that much. At least that's what staff, staff feels in that area. One of the other issues was, of course, drainage. The drainage in the area, since they are kind of up above, the applicant is working with the city engineer to come up with the Birmingham system. Also drainage swell and a new storm drain connection to ensure that the water isn't flowing onto the lower areas. One of the other concerns was the amount of drive, driveway cuts along there with the existing home and the triplex in the back. Staff is requesting in order to mitigate that is that they just have one driveway going to the back of the one street and then each, you know, the single-family home can, you know, go off of that as well. So that's kind of the, the negative impacts and the safeguards to overcome those. And on page six of your staff report, there's just a little diagram showing each of those a little bit, you know, a quicker way to look at those. So staff believes that with the negative impacts being mitigated, that it, this extra additional units per acre is an acceptable use for this lot. And so our recommendation tonight is to accept the conceptual site plan and to approve the conditional use permit.
Thank you Brandon. Any questions or comments for staff?
Is that net or gross density?
It would be gross.
So including sidewalks and half streets?
Yes.
Do you know what it is with net by chance?
I don't, yeah. No. Do you know what it is?
So the setback from the existing home to the triplex, there's a 15.23 setback there. When you talk about rear setbacks, you're talking about the entire pad, the entire build pad?
Correct, yeah. So you would look at the behind, see in this area where Corey's pointing to. That is your-
And there's no requirements on how close an existing-
Six feet.
Yeah, six feet.
Six feet, okay.
What's the significance of that line that goes up through unit three and up the side of that driveway?
That's the current flag-
You mean the-
That we approved, right?
Yeah, is that the current flag lot we've approved?
That's the, there's a water line.
Well, there's a line that goes-
Yeah, they've, they've left this old flag lot line on the ground.
Okay, so that's the old flag lot line.
But so by, the flag lot is just completely erased now?
Yeah, this is just one lot for now?
He has submitted actually the new-
You're just treating it as a multifamily lot on a single parcel.
So if, if he's going to, it sounds like he's going to condominiumize them, the legal description would be each of these units is a separate unit, correct?
Yeah, if they were to go into the condominium process, there's a whole other level of review to be able to convert. And that's something that they need to explore. If they proceed forward, they could just simply build a multifamily project and it would have four units on it. They would have to then look at conversion to a PUD and all of the additional elements that would entail and whether they want to, to create that. But for now, they just submitted a multifamily lot.
And I know we talked last time with the applicant about maintaining that existing house. Would there be any, he could also just knock it down and add a fourth?
You mean just to add an additional, yes, yeah.
Yeah, if they wanted to change this layout before obviously they build.
Would we, would we be able to see it again at that point or?
Well, if they want to amend any of your approvals, yeah, you would see it again.
Would that have to come back to conceptual?
Most likely because it's a significant change from their original. So I would say most likely. I mean, that's a whole separate review, so we don't know what they're proposing, so.
On the, on the, the traffic and the curb cut issue, show me where the driveway would service the smaller home.
So you just have the driveway, yeah, just right, right there where-
Is that their existing entrance? Isn't their existing entrance down below, right?
Driveways on that side.
The driveway is that little rectangle, isn't it, on the lower side?
Yeah, lower right.
Is there a garage or something down there?
There's no garage.
No, there's no garage.
It's just a drive-in, so, so they would close that off? Or would that be an additional parking place for the smaller home?
That's just what we're recommending, so you don't have the two driveways, you know, right close by each other.
Staff, this, this parking encroaches into the front yard setback. So placement of new parking needs to be behind the setback, which would be over in this area. And I think in discussions with the applicant, he was trying to reserve enough area here for a garage to be built.
So what is the dotted line behind the existing home? Those ski-wumpy things?
That's the sewer laterals?
Not the green.
Well, there's little squares with lines coming off of the patio.
These here?
Yes.
That's their patio.
Patio right now?
Mm-hmm.
I believe.
So if you wanted to-
Been a while since I've been there, but I think there's-
If you wanted to build a garage, where would that be possible? I don't see that anywhere in this-
Right here.
On the north side of the house.
Yeah, it'd have to be right on the, behind the front and then, yeah, right in that area.
So they'd come in off the driveway and drive into their garage?
Yeah.
And I think that's something that you'd want to see at a final site plan, how they're proposing that.
Other questions for staff?
One last question. With the berm and the detention pond and all of that, those can be used, you know, setbacks are, they don't take into account- those can be used at, you know, setbacks are, they don't take into account any of that sort of thing?
No, the, 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 the detention facility, so long as it's impervious, just counts towards their forty percent.
Okay.
And, and so they have a, there's a utility easement going across the side of that lot to bring that out to that other road?
Uh, the storm drain?
Yeah, and the sewer.
Uh, the sewer is, is going this way and supposedly out, they can describe the applicant, the storm drain is on the west side heading out.
But the sewer's coming out the west side too?
The sewer comes out, um, the...
Right next to the storm drain?
The south, so it's coming straight down, down.
They, the, the developer can actually find what they're interested in.
I assume that's some sort of a public utility easement he's bringing that through?
To bring it through the other property or to... Yeah, that'll be looked at as well with the, you know, public utility easement.
With regards to the negative impact of the surrounding development, we, staff is recommending that they include the six foot fence and that there be additional trees planted along that north side of the fence. Is there some requirement that it be a certain type of tree or that it reach a certain height? Or is it completely to the discretion of the builder, what type of trees that they put along that fence line?
I think that's a good question. What we're gleaning that off of, and, and Brandon can correct me, is that um, in our commercial areas and our transitional zones, between multifamily, we have a standard buffer requirement. And that buffer requirement has to be a wall or vegetation or vegetation that would function as a wall with vegetation. And so, from our perspective, we would be looking at meeting that requirement for the screening buffer. So from R M to R L is a place we require, look at buffers, C H to C V H, C H to C M, there's a buffer requirement. And we, we're just gleaning off that this is a transit, transition between single family, multifamily. So we'd like to see that buffer along that edge. And in a medium zone, it's ten feet, ten feet of plantings and, and fencing.
Another question, um, with the homes that are surrounding, I know the one to the north is the duplex. And then along four hundred north down is that larger complex?
Granite Square.
Granite Square, yeah.
Hmm hmm.
Um, are there any other besides those two? Are there any other multifamily homes? I know it's zoned multifamily, but...
Yeah, there's duplexes along parish.
Yes, you have um, one next to the school and in between the school and in between uh, granite square, there's one.
Any closer than granite square is what I'm asking.
Oh, any closer, even going opposite direction. Um, I believe there's two that are there.
Besides the one that's right next to it, that's north of it?
I think, I think there's one other, I think.
And the rest are all single family homes?
Yes, yeah, the rest are all single family homes. However, since they are zoned...
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, each of those single family homes, if the, you know, property owner so desired, could, you know, take advantage of that development as well.
Yeah, I looked at that and I drove along it and I could only, I couldn't make out anything besides the one.
Oh, so maybe that's...
So, okay, I just didn't know if you knew.
Any other questions for staff? Let's go ahead and turn some time over then to the applicant, if you'd like to come forward. And uh, I think there are a few questions we might have for you. And if you have any comments to, you'd like to make to start with on anything that's been said from the staff report or, or questions raised by the commissioners.
Yeah, my name's Chad Morris, I'm the applicant. Um, really, I, I, the, just for clarification with that, I, I did submit another plat map that's, that's just a little, shows the sewer, I guess that's an option for sewer, uh, to go through that down the easement. But the other one actually has it going through the back and connecting to the lateral there of the home. Uh, as for the, yeah, from what I was gathering with the driveway, or for the garage, um, obviously I don't know, I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, the garage be put there. But uh, but yeah, that certainly could have a driveway right there, at least parking there. Uh, I want to say that's, I think it's roughly thirty feet or twenty-five feet between the house and the, and the, uh, the actual driveway, the entrance, so. Um, but, yeah, as for anything else, I mean, I, I think they, they hit it fairly clearly on that. I guess the, I did want to clarify too, the, the reason that I'm coming back with this, I mean, it's, it's essentially the same thing that I did before um, without the flag lot and that was because I, I, I was just mistaken on the definition of a flag lot. Um, I think we all kind of thought that a, that the triplex could be put on a flag lot in this area, in R M. But uh, turns out you can't, so. So we just, the, yeah, this is a, a new option, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may just put, shed light on that. The, the way the flag lot definition worked, the flag portion can have a single family home, the front portion would have to have the triplex. So the actual ordinance would have required the switch. So to preserve the home at this point in time, he chose to do multifamily development rather than a flag lot.
So what, what about the existing driveway and parking area uh, that's on this uh, home? Are you planning to take that out and, and landscape that or?
I have, honestly, I haven't put too much thought into the existing parking. Uh, but really, it, it probably be really, not, that, right now is single, a single parking stall. Um, my thought was initially to leave it, but uh, so that there's just extra parking. But uh, but if it needs to come out, I understand that, so, you know.
What about where is the, um, the fire hydrant gonna go? I know there was a requirement to have one, but I don't see it.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
The Mickey Mouse.
Blue.
Yeah, and that, the fire hydrant, um, the sewer or the fire department, they kind of have a recommendation, they, they stated that if it's over a hundred fifty feet from one, the one corner to the kitty corner of the building, then that's when they want a fire hydrant. Uh, I'm still trying to get clarification to that, Brandon had, had asked if, if by chance that second duplex or the, the, the last unit was separated uh, and there was that six feet in there. Uh, but if, if that fire hydrant would be required or not, um, it's, and, but obviously it's gonna be done if it's the, the fire marshal states that, that it needs to be done, so.
Okay, thank you.
But if it was completely built out exactly how that was, that wide and then yes, if, uh, from what I understand, the fire, um, hydrant would be required.
Other questions for the applicant?
My recollection in reading through the packet was that you weren't sure if you were gonna put in single story or double story buildings. I'm guessing if you're gonna throw garages in there, that it's likely going to be second story buildings?
And that's, yeah, I'm also, I'm in the process of that, of trying to find that out. And, and Corey and Brandon have kind of told me that that's kind of the, you know, to get the, uh, if I remember right, the, the site, final site plan approval, I need to kind of have at, at least a, if, if, if it were a rambler, if it were a two-story, I need to have what they would look like so they could figure out if they would fit or not. Am, am I correct on that?
Yeah, we would know, want to know final site plan. We, we approach the C U P as if it's eligible for the thirty-five feet, so.
Right.
Uh, if they choose to go lower, that might render some difference, but I don't think significant for staff to, to change our recommendation. But, but on your final site plan, our expectations with the submittal is to know what the elevations are.
Yes, my concern i- is with respect to this negative impact issue next to the surrounding properties, I mean, you're gonna have a very, assuming that it's two stories and right now I'm gonna assume that it'll be two stories, cause you can go to the thirty-five feet. That's gonna be a very large building that looms over those houses that are nearby. So I'd like to know what it is that you intend to do with respect to the barrier. I mean, do you have plans or is it just?
With respect to the barrier, what do you mean by barrier?
The buffer, the six foot fence plus the up to ten foot tree line that Corey had mentioned.
Yeah, well, I assume too much of a barrier's gonna be a negative impact as well, you know, cause you can have a, a barrier. Um, but these are gonna be homes, uh, so yes, but if you look at the actual, uh, where those homes are located, and the homes to the south, that is, there's actually quite a bit of buffer space with their lots and, and this lot. But uh, but you're, I guess you're right, we did initially go over if it was a two-story um, with, with planning or with Corey and Brandon, if it was two-story, what would be the impacts? Um, and honestly, we couldn't find too many, uh, like would it be blocking the sunlight to our, to our garden? Uh, that type of thing, but uh, but you're right, I think you could see it. You could definitely see the, the two-story home. But I don't know what, what type of plan in terms of, they've already kind of said that there has, there needs to be trees there along with the fence, so I don't know if there's too much more that you could do that would be, cause you don't want a large wall there. So I don't know if there's too much more you'd want to do as a, from a neighbor's perspective.
Is it even feasible to get three units with a rambler? With...
From what I've seen, yes.
With the garage?
What I, what I've been looking at is more of a, uh, a s- a master on the main level, one bedroom with bedrooms, two bedrooms downstairs. So it's more of a, uh, kind of a...
Main floor living?
Main floor living, um, going, going down in a home size, you know, going from a four thousand square foot home to a nice twenty-four hundred square foot home, uh, with a big open gray room. So yes, I've looked at plans where it is actually very possible. The garage is gonna be kind of a smaller garage, like, like kind of the ones in Brighton, if you were to do that. Uh, at the, at the Brighton area over there, uh, behind. So, which is a, a doable two-car garage, but it's not, you're not storing everything in there. But uh, but honestly, it would actually allow quite, quite a bit of s- good space. So if, even with just, with one bedroom, once you start adding, trying to get three bedrooms, it's not gonna, you know, that's where you're gonna go out. But, but my plan ultimately has been to kind of been, be more that, look at that more, uh, downsizing, empty nester, getting away from the yard type of home.
Because the surrounding, you're right, that, Sheilin, that the surrounding buildings are all those similar era where they're all the single level, um, longer, flatter look and that would be a, a big difference from what is surrounding.
Yeah, I guess, oh, go ahead.
And, and my concern, I, I certainly don't want a ten-foot wall along the back edge, but I would like to see something that would work to create some type of a barrier with the greenery and, and it struck me as I was reading this, I mean, there are a lot of different types of trees. There are a lot of different types of trees that grow at very different rates, some grow faster than others. I mean, I, have you had a chance to talk with any of the neighbors to see if they have a preference for, you know, one type of tree over another? That might, sort of, I just, I'm, I'm just looking at that big building, thinking that's gonna be pretty big a, as a big collective unit, if it's two stories in that neighborhood. So I'd like to see if there's something that we can do to help mitigate, you know, the hulkingness of it for the surrounding neighbors.
No, that, and that makes sense and I, and as, as we, they were talking about trees that kind of hit the ten-foot level, but, but again, I mean, I don't know if you want to have just a wall, a complete wall of, I mean, I, maybe you do want a complete wall of trees, I don't know, but, um...
It's either a wall of home or wall of trees.
Yeah. So, but, but where the ten-foot, I mean, I understand the, the concern, uh...
Especially since those neighborhoods' yards are, um, very secluded as is right now. Um, then putting raised, looking into their yards might be...
Yeah.
A negative impact for them.
Yeah, on the flip side, it does seem to be like that's what the intent of this R M is, is to utilize that interior space, if I, if I understood kind of the, the, uh, the code correctly from, from R M, it's meant to do that, so if you're...
Utilize it, but not negatively impact the neighbors.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make one response to a concern that was raised about heights. One thing I'd caution the commission on is it's certainly, I think feasible to have a discussion about heights and screening. I would be hesitant to support any discussion in requiring a lower, uh, height because all of these homes are eligible for thirty-five feet and many of them are older. And so I suspect granite square has added some viability to the area. This product will probably, if approved, add some viability to the area, understanding that there are some that don't desire it to go that direction. Um, but if it does, you possibly see even some smaller homes being torn down and being raised to the thirty-five foot level. And both the R L zone and the R M zone both allow that to happen. So if you undo burden this to a twenty-foot or twenty-five foot height, you, these are still eligible to be torn down and built to the thirty-five. So I would focus on mitigating the height if it ever reached that level, rather than trying to take the height and reduce it.
How high is granite squ- square now?
Uh, they're, they've got that steeper pitch through, so they're gonna be mid twenties and above.
Hmm hmm.
That's single level?
Yeah, that's a single level.
Okay, thank you, Corey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, this matter's been scheduled for a public hearing. We would, uh, like to invite any members of the public who would like to come forward and be heard on this matter at this time. Please state your name, uh, and address for the record.
My name's Chuck Madsen and we're the owner of the property to the north of this. And I've heard the discussion and you're talking about mitigating the impact to the people of the south and wanting to, uh, provide a fence for them. And so I've expressed to Chad, we're concerned about the impact to our property. The, the driveway's going to be on the north of his property, which is the south of mine. So the impact of the traffic is all going to be on my lot, on the people to the south, that'll have the house buffering them. Uh, we're, we're very concerned about the, the noise level, the, uh, you know, taking away our privacy, uh, everything that we've enjoyed for twenty years. And we think that, that we should have a fence, a six-foot privacy fence mitigating the impact of us. Uh, we're concerned about the number of cars that'd be going in there. And we've become aware that they're also, their family members also buying the property to the west. And I'm concerned if they do that again, there'll be another six, another three units, so you, you might have to double more whether you connect onto this driveway or not, but maybe you wouldn't allow that, I don't know. But if they do, then we'd have the, the traffic for six units coming in behind us. We already have fourth on, uh, on one side of this, parish on the other. Now we'll become an island with the third side becoming a drive, a high-traffic driveway. And we're asking for mitigating the, the, the impact that's gonna have on our privacy, our buffering zone, the, um, aesthetics of ours. People like our backyard, that when, when we, we rented it, it's always been the, the drawing point, cause they have picnic table, barbecue, they do things and that's all gonna go away. We're gonna be looking now at parked cars. And, um, I'm hoping that you can require something to mitigate our damage. So anyway, it, I don't know where this is all leading that started out with a house and, and two units, now three units. And then I'm concerned it might end up being six units. And, uh, you know, we have a garden back there, we plant fruit trees, we're there all the time. Uh, we don't want to lose all that privacy and then...
And I don't think there's another area in there, around that area, that has four units on less than a half acre. And I don't care what the zoning is, you are impacting that area. And I know none of you live in that area, so you're not impacted by it. But for people who do live in that area, they are definitely gonna be impacted by this development. And especially if his brother develops on down right behind where he is under... And especially if his brother develops on down right behind where he is under contract. These two properties will connect. And from what I understand, there's, is, can be another triplex in there. And so, I'm trying to figure out, where are all those people gonna come out at? And most likely, it's gonna be coming out past back up to northeast unless they knock something down and come out on parish lane. So, you've got to realize that they do this in little parcels, but pretty soon this project from, turns in from four to three more units or whatever. And pretty soon, you've got a little city in the middle of the block. And it's just not fair, nor is it right, to do that to the people that have lived there forever. It's just not a pleasant thing to see going on in the city. And so, we would really appreciate if you would take in consideration the people that have lived there forever. None of you live there, but there are people that have lived there for a long time. And you are gonna be impacting them. So, and, you know, that's all I have to say. But definitely don't care with what Chubb's trying to do to this piece of property. It was bad enough when it was a duplex. Now, it's a triplex and then the house up front. And the little house is gonna be left with no property. You guys go in there and look at that piece of property and see how much lawn, how much green there's gonna be left around that little house. It's, there's hardly anything. It's gonna be mostly just buildings back in there. So, it's not a great thing as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak as part of the public hearing? Uh, seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, would invite the applicant to come back up and perhaps address some of the concerns that have been raised during the hearing.
Yes. Um, I actually have, I grew up right around the corner there. So, I, I do know kind of the area pretty well. My parents still live there.
Where?
At five forty-seven North, four hundred East. I used to walk by here to school every day. But, so I, I know the area. And I, I understand what, what she might be saying, that it's, it's a, you know, it's scary to have new construction going on. But a lot of times, I'd say most of the time, it, it actually helps the neighborhood quite a bit. And, and quite frankly, the, the streets over there on, on parish, they, like, they are the older homes. It, it's coming to a point where it needs some revitalization, honestly. And I, I feel like the home, these homes that I would be bringing in would be doing that. Whether, you know, whether there's driveway or a lot of driveway or not, it's, it would be helping the neighborhood honestly quite a bit, just having new homes in there.
What is, what is planned to be constructed, if anything, along the north side of the driveway?
Along the north side of the driveway between their duplex?
Right.
Constructed as a...
Any kind, any kind of buffer, any kind of landscaping?
Our, my initial thought was probably having shrubs there and bushes and whatnot. Because there, there's, like I said, there's a requirement for bushes, shrubs, trees.
No plans for a fence along there?
Not initially. Most of the yard, I mean, a lot of what they're saying, it's mostly driveway, I guess, that they, their back would be looking at. Which I can understand, that's, it's driveway. It's not as pretty. It's a driveway. But, but as, as for parked cars, there's really only a short distance there that, that they're really where the house would be backing up their home. There's not a lot of it. Most of what they would be seeing would be the, what is already there, you know, minus, except the driveway as well. So, there's, which, you know, if, even if that house were left, or even if the, nothing was done, most likely someone would probably come and put a driveway over there anyway and, and put the garage on that side. That's the spot for the garage, a natural spot. So, they'd be dealing with a driveway regardless. But granted, there's, there's three more units. So, um, I'm trying to think of other, other questions they had.
They raised the, the question about whether this is just a springboard to further development and that there would be some shared use. Maybe this is not really a question for you as, as, as much as it is for staff. But what, what are your thoughts on that?
On that? Yeah, that home is, is for sale. It's under contract.
Which one?
That one right there, that, that is circled there. I don't know what's gonna happen with it, honestly. We've, uh, we initially kind of brought it to the city, say, what are the options there? What do you think? And I don't know. So, they kind of said, if you, if you are gonna do something, you'd probably wanna table this and, and do, go through with it and wait till that's, till you figure out that and...
Do you have any, do you have any interest with your, with your brother? Do you have any interest in that property?
I, I'm not an owner. I have no interest, so... I, I guess I'm not an owner or even the one under contract, so...
And you don't have any agreements with your brother or anything?
He's talked about, if I did this, could I possibly do that? And we've thought about, well, yes, or you could possibly just tear down the addition. Uh, there's kind of a, they, they built in a, a carport there that is on the far west side. Uh, so he's thought about that. He's thought about just turning that into a duplex, that house into a duplex. But as of right now, I, the, his options from what, I mean, this applies nothing to what I'm doing, but I don't even know if it's gonna happen, that he's gonna buy it. I, I would say it's very unlikely. So, it's... If it was likely, I'd probably, I probably would have tabled it already. But, but I'm, that's not to say it will. I, I don't know what could happen there. There's many different options, just like there are all these homes over here.
Any, anything else you'd like to add from what you've heard in public hearing?
No, other than I, I really do feel like this would add a lot to the value, not just of, not just aesthetically, but value-wise to the property, to other people's properties. It's, it's going to help immensely, I, I feel, as, as nice new homes are, are constructed in there. Uh, it's, especially if it kind of goes the way I envision it, to where it is kind of that, that empty nester, that downsizing home, it's, I believe it would really help the community.
Thank you. Uh, don't sit down quite yet. I think, I'd like some clarification from staff on the connection issue. I'm not quite sure I understand what, what the possibility would be for utilizing this approved driveway for any future developments sometime.
We're not reviewing that tonight. So, we've had discussions. He's talked about ideas. Staff shared ideas with him that we would have to look at. And if he wanted to master plan and join properties together and aggregate them, there's some advantages to doing that and there's some disadvantages of doing that. But he's chosen to just pursue the application as is. So, if he at some point wants to change that direction, then he would come back to you again.
We'd have to come back for a whole new review at that point.
Yep.
So, could, so that would be come back and do the whole thing as master plan? Not this piece and then that piece adding on to it? Or?
No, that's not to say this, that they don't purchase the property, rent the home for five years and come back at a later date and ask for a connection. They could do that. Or develop independently and it'll just be reviewed on its merits at that time.
That would require, if it were PUD at that point, that would require an amendment to the subdivision plot, wouldn't it?
And a conditional use permit.
And a conditional use permit.
And the site plan process, so...
Other questions for the applicant or staff?
Cory, staff had specifically called out the south side as a negative impact in the staff report, but it didn't mention the north side being negatively impacted. Could you speak to that issue and if you concluded that there were no negative impacts to the north side property, what your thinking was on that?
Let me give you the framework and then Brandon can comment since he reviewed the report. The framework is, is when you transition to zones, there's always a discussion of buffering. So, when you go to RL, to RM, you always have a transitional discussion. The ordinance basically looks at that. Now that you're talking about the other property to the north, it's in the same like zone. And so, at that point in time, you're not trying to transition between the two. You have to look at now what kind of impact is created, identify that impact, and then determine if it can be mitigated or not. And so, I think that's the discussion to use. Does the driveway in a same property zone create an impact that needs to be mitigated? Or is it something that just somebody wishes it because it would make things better? Not to disrespect their wish, but if it's not a true impact. So, true impact for me is, is there exhaust odors? Is there noise? Is there headlight shining in bedrooms? Is there something of that nature that needs to be mitigated? Simply somebody who may not like an adjacent development, they have their own ability to put up their own fence and screen that. And so, the aesthetics of some desire versus the impact, in my opinion, you have to separate. So, if the driveway to the north is to be mitigated, what is its impact and how best to mitigate it?
Yeah, and exactly with that, I, I was also looking at if, if a person was just to have a regular property and they wanted to put a driveway on that, that line, you know, can they, can they do that? And they can. So, really, there's no, you know, impact there that is different than what a normal development could have. So, that's the, the reason why I was looking at that. And as Cory mentioned, there's certain guidelines as we are looking at the conditional use permit that we're looking at to see if it impacts that and how is it mitigated. So, that's the kind of why we, I did that.
So, I have a question for staff. Could we approve the conditional use permit as it follows all the requirements?
Not an approval. It's the idea of somebody showing how possibly it could be developed. You return to them some feedback. They go back and address it. And so, in our opinion, you have sufficient to see the conceptual. Now, it's what directives do you wanna give to come back with the final?
But I think we could decide as well, in our opinion, if we feel like we have sufficient information for conceptual.
Certainly, you can make that.
Could you, am I allowed to speak?
Sure, please.
I mean, could it just be this, to the effect of, we wanna make sure that before the, you know, that there are a number of shrubs planted on that side or whatever before the final is approved? Is that what you're saying? Before the final site plan is approved? Because they have, don't, don't, they have to approve, the, the final has to be approved, final site plan. Uh, and that's where, if I understand correctly as well, that more landscaping is dealt with?
Yeah, so, I mean, you could do a condition of, you know, you want so many shrubs on, on that side. Is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah, you could, you could do that. And, and I don't think that that would necessarily have to table the conditional use permit or, you know, to add that in there.
I think what Cory was pointing out is, obviously, at, at final site plan, they do have to have a landscaping plan, a detailed landscaping plan. But the conceptual site plan is not where you have the authority to add trees. Typically, when we look at site plan, we don't say you have to have, you know, these kind of trees for a residential lot. It's at the conditional use permit what, level where you're saying, we wanna mitigate this impact with more buffering. And so, that's why as staff, we would like that condition. So, you could just say, we want a condition of X number of trees and we want this kind of tree, you know, and add it in. Or you can table it and say, when you bring this back with final site plan, we wanna see the details on the buffering.
I like that. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we have two matters in front of us tonight. We have the conceptual site plan. Staff has recommended approval for the reasons stated and conditional use permit. As I understand Cory and Lisa, it would be possible to table the conditional use permit until we see the final site plan, which I guess implies that we would, we would approve tonight the conceptual site plan to allow them to move forward to the final, tabling the conditional use permit until such time as the final has been submitted and, and reviewed. Uh, so those are, as I see it, the options available to us tonight. Any further discussion or question on that aspect of it? And I, I was curious when I read through the staff report, why the conditional use recommenda, or the conceptual site plan recommendation was first and the conditional use permit second. I would have thought the other way around. But I don't know that it matters which one we, we consider first. Any, any point of order on that, Lisa, that you can help us with?
No, I think Brandon and Cory can respond to that, but I think you can do either.
Just the way I, just the way you said it.
Just the way I said it.
You have to start somewhere.
Yeah.
That, that being the case, I'm going to make a motion that we table the conditional use permit application until such time as a final site plan is submitted and reviewed by the commission. I'll second that. And moved and seconded, please.
Just a comment. Again, if you want specifics on the buffering, my suggestion is that you make that a condition of the CUP.
So, adding that into the tabling?
There's tabling, the CUP.
If we see, if we table the CUP, then cannot we?
And giving direction to ensure that the site plan shows the buffering? Are you relying on the final site plan landscaping to address the buffering?
We, we are.
Okay.
Oh, I, I am. That was my intent.
Okay.
I shouldn't say we are. Maybe you are not. But that was my intent.
I, I think the message is there.
So, uh, it moved and seconded that we table the application for conditional use permit at this time. Any further debate coming?
Now, the buffering we're talking about is the buffering between the two zones? Or are we talking about also the buffering on the north side? I mean, the, the discussion on both of them.
Well, I, I was anticipating, uh, may, maybe buffering's not the right term. But I, I think the, the, the final site plan should show the landscaping, which should give us some indication of what, what protection there is for, for all of the neighbors.
If it's not sufficient, you can address it then.
Exactly.
My comment would be that I feel much more comfortable with that, given that I, after Cory, you know, recommended not to limit the height. I mean, I understood, you know, taking that away from the one and then allowing all the other neighbors to maybe do that wouldn't seem like a, a fair decision. But yet, I did want to mitigate any negative impacts for the neighbors. And so, I do appreciate this more detailed look at the final site plan. I think that would be a good way for us as a commission to be able to consider how we can mitigate, how the applicant can mitigate any of those concerns for surrounding neighbors.
Thank you.
David, I had a question. Is that appropriate to ask a question to staff at this point in the debate?
Sure.
Um, Cory, the height is not something that is part of the conditional use permit, correct?
Well, you have a permitted height of thirty-five feet. So, the position I'm taking is that thirty-five feet isn't allowed.
That's, so the conditional use permit is not, does not address height?
Yeah, the conditional use, but it's indirect. You can use height as an impact and ask for mitigation, but I don't...
As, as part of the conditional use process, even though height was granted?
Yeah, because your conditional use permit for additional building height is in every zone. So, every zone has a provision that you can get a higher building through a CUP. And you'll look at the height. What you're balancing is, there's a permitted height that you can't take away because they have it by right. But having that right of thirty-five feet, if it creates a problem, you can ask for mitigation. Now, this is the chicken and the egg.
Hold on, can you ask for that mitigation outside of the CUP? Say they didn't want a CUP. Can we require mitigation for vested rights without a CUP?
No, permitted use, you have it by right.
So...
It's, it's the impact now that it's creating you can mitigate. And then back to the cliche of chicken and egg, the height is allowed. They have to propose a mitigation, and is that mitigation sufficient to cover that impact?
But if they're...
And reduce, reducing the height to me is your problem, saying, saying you can only go twenty-eight feet when it's a permitted right to go to thirty-five feet.
Sure.
So, you, you're, you're trying to find what's being impacted. How do you mitigate it? Buffering is the standard procedure for mitigation to take away the edge of that height through landscaping and fencing.
Right, so the, the, in this CUP, we have no discuss, they're not requesting a conditional permit for anything to do with height.
No, it's use.
And as we did...
Density. The CUP is related to the density only. Density. The CUP is related to the density only.
Okay, so would, would we have to, a mitigation requirement, would we have to tie it to the thing that their conditional use is requesting?
That kind of density creates this kind of impact.
Right.
And can it involve?
I think I have sufficient information.
Bulk area issues, yes. It can involve bulk area issues.
So your conditions can only be imposed to mitigate a negative impact? So I think that's what Corey's saying is, what's the negative impact when everyone in that area can go to thirty-five feet?
Yeah, let's just say they built a home back there, well, the home is CUP, but let's say they're eligible for permitted use. If it was just a site plan, no CUP, the thirty-five feet is default, no matter what the situation is. Even if people felt like that was an impact, the permitted use density gets to thirty-five feet, period. And whether it's impact or not, they get it. The CUP allows you to step in and say, yeah, but you're going to build a density with this height. Can I mitigate it?
Right.
And, and again, a lot of that detail will come out in the final site plan.
Well, and that is why the area is zoned. If it's residential medium at four per acre, I mean, that's kind of insane, but that's insanely low, four per acre at residential medium. But then this, this conditional use goes up to eight, so that we can then, as a planning commission, look at, okay, we are allowing this residential medium to occur, and we now have the ability to mitigate some of these concerns that happen through residential medium.
Thank you.
Good. Good discussion. Anything else before we vote? This is a vote for, on the motion to table the conditional use permit. It's been moved and seconded. We'll start with you, Commissioner Wright.
Aye.
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 Appears to be unanimous, so the conditional use permit application is tabled pending review, submission and review of the final site plan. Now on to the conceptual site plan that has been submitted and debated tonight. Chair will entertain a motion on that.
I move to accept the conditional, or the conceptual site plan. And should I say it specifically? Yes, I should. Sorry. I may, I hereby make a motion for the planning commission to accept the conceptual site plan for Martha's place, located at three forty-seven North, four hundred East, with the conditions one through eleven, and suggested reasons for the action A through D on the staff report.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any further discussion or debate?
So, let me play the dummy. Oh, I always play the dummy here.
I always do that. I'm the one.
What are the things, so, what are we approving in the conceptual site plan? That would not be in the CUP?
No.
For my, what I'm understanding is that if we're not, we just tabled the CUP, and for us to see the final site plan with the CUP, we have to go through the approval of the conceptual. And the conceptual is essentially just, we know what you're doing now, and then we're going to see more detail later. I may be wrong.
So we're saying, yeah, we're, we're okay with the concept of the four units on the, on the site plan?
Yeah, this is how the property can be developed.
Without dealing with the particulars as to the details.
It doesn't say you're okay. It says, it says you understand how they potentially want to develop.
Let's push it down the road, so that when we get to the CUP, we say, okay, we, if we're going to, we're going to grant this, but then we need to have these conditions to mitigate whatever we feel the negative impacts are.
We all know how conditional use permits work, and just, just by way of reminder, conditional use permits will be granted unless negative impacts cannot be mitigated.
Right.
That's the law. And so I think we, we need to move forward with the process so we can get to a place where we can make the decision.
And I, I think that we have to, we have to articulate that clearly in what we're doing, because otherwise we give the impression that we can put all sorts of guns to these people's heads. And, and, I mean, as much as I, I'm, the madsons have their concerns about what, what they have on their property. The guy next door has a right to develop and use his property. So we're, we're balancing against that right, the right of the people next door, and so, it's not an easy choice, but still, we can't say, okay, we're going to put all, we can't put unreasonable restraints on what he does with his property if he complies with a negative, mitigating the negative impacts.
Correct.
And so I guess that discussion will be, in, in our, in our CUP approval, be, okay, what have you done to mitigate what we perceive to be the negative impacts? So I just want to be, make that clear, so that everybody comes, when they come to the next meeting, they understand that we're trying to deal with that, and he has a constitutional right to develop his property to some extent. I mean, we just can't say, well, we don't like, we just can't ad hoc say, we don't like that or whatever. And then how, how do you define what a negative impact is? That's the other thing.
That's why there are seven of you debating that.
So Scott should be the mayor.
So, was that motion seconded yet?
Yeah.
It was. Okay, so we are still discussing this?
Further debate?
Further, okay.
I, I just wanted to clarify what the, what we're approving, but also the fact that we've turned down this, what tabled the CUP, doesn't mean that all of a sudden we're going to tell them we can't do anything on this property.
Right.
So my hesitation, even though I put forth the motion, my hesitation is that there, yes, I get that it's residential medium. And I, and I think one of the things that I want to do is to see the CUP, to see if this really will, will mitigate those negative impacts, because exactly what you just said, he has a right to develop his property, it is in the zone, it fits the zoning. But yet, are every, are all of the homes around it media, residential medium? Are they all very tall? Are they all, you know, no? And do we want it to maintain exactly how it is forever? No, also. So there's a balancing act that we need to play, that we need to take into consideration of allowing him to use, utilize that property and have those rights, but also not negatively impacting.
I think what I heard Chair Hershey's original motion on the CUP was, I'm not ready to move forward to the CUP, identify all those issues yet, till I see how you finally want to develop the site.
Exactly.
Once I get a chance to look at that and prepare those plans, then I'm more apt to make that decision, have you mitigated or not?
Right.
Thank you for articulating what I tried to say. Any other comments or debate? Thank you for your comments. Let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 The conceptual site plan is approved, and we'll look forward to seeing the final. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, I'm playing tag team. We've had three crashes with the live view camera, so.
Oh.
I get sidelined over there trying to put in part two, part three.
So I just want to be on KSL.
Yeah, not, not to be flippant about it, but the Olympics are on, so I doubt our audience is really large enough.
I don't know.
Probably true. I would have multi-screens going if I were home, watching you guys, watching the Olympics. You'd be the small picture in picture, though.
Sounds awful.
Yeah. Let's move to the next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of a proposed co-text amendment regarding section twelve dash twelve dash zero four zero, definitions by adding climate-controlled storage in chapter twelve dash thirty-six, table of uses allowed by allowing climate-controlled storage in various zones, including the CH Commercial High zoning district.
And where would, where would, okay, I'm sorry.
Come on.
When you're ready to discuss, I have.
I, I would like to turn some time over to Commissioner Johns.
Um, I'm going to recuse myself. I have significant professional interest in this particular topic. However, I may hang around, much to Lisa's excitement.
Okay. Sorry to lose you.
I'm not.
Little cat calls to the audience there. We'll, we'll turn the time over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't plan on holding a lot of discussion about this with you. I'm going to let you have dialogue with the applicant. This is an introduction of a new type of storage facility use. I'll let the applicant describe to you why they want to do it. I think that just the main points is that staff feels it's necessary to define this differently than the other storage definitions to begin with. We have self-storage, we have warehousing, we have those type of facilities in the industrial area available. We don't have it in the commercial areas. And I think this is a hybrid, if you will, of a storage facility. So I think it's important we come up with a definition, and the intent in trying to write this lengthy definition is the idea that we're going to be using a single building or a single suite inside of a building, and this is not a, a strip center, where all the doors are roll-up doors. This is the idea that you have to go inside of the building through a main door of some type, and then access the individual storage areas. That's the intent of what you would call climate-controlled storage. I also bring up the issue of, the request is to put it in the CH zone. I bring up the elements that we believe that are associated with the CH zone and its location. So when we look at the general plan, I brought up general plan statements from the various zones that are commercial, so that you understand the general plan statement in the pages area, in the parish area, South Frontage Road, and understand that these are the areas affected by this change with these policies in our commercial areas. The other thing I bring up is if you're moving to CH, if you're going to consider that, CVH, you usually add the uses from the lower zone up to the higher zone, unless there's a specific reason you don't want that there. And so if you do consider it in the CH zone, we are indicating it ought to be at least looked at in the CH zone, which is a higher intensity zone. The logic would be the lower intensity uses bump up to the higher intensity uses, and then this higher intensity uses adds more to it. So hopefully, you understood that. I'll borrow your quick.
Hopefully, we understood that.
And I, I don't know. The way I write, sometimes I'm confusing myself. Staff stayed neutral, because I think there's ways to look at this as positive, and I think there's ways to look at this as a negative. And you'll find very much the same findings, depending if the glass is half-empty or the glass is half-full. I think the stark contrast is, is we want our commercial area as high-quality services to the businesses and community. But we also say in those policies, and services needed for residents and commercial users. And so I think you have to weigh this out. We do see climate-controlled storage being introduced in commercial areas and other areas, not only in Utah, but across the country. The question is, is this something that Centerville wants to entertain? So with that, unless you have specific questions, I think you could dialogue with the petitioner and why they're seeking it, their particular development, and then you could ask me specifics on the report and, and any responses.
Before we go there, though, I, I just want to, I, I didn't have a chance to go back in and, and look at the permitted and conditional uses in those zones. I, I take it from the staff report and what you've just said, that self-storage is not a permitted or conditional under either of those zones at this point.
Correct.
And I guess one thought I would just throw out at the beginning of this discussion would be whether there is some way to allow for this usage that is not as broad-brush as has been presented here, because this, this goes not just to the site that's being looked at right now, but would involve all of our commercial and commercial high zones.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. We didn't invite the applicant to come up, and we probably have some questions. If you'd just state your name and address for the record, please, and speak into the mic, because our acoustics aren't all that great.
They are not very good. Steve Tate. Until a month ago, we were Centerville residents on the north end, just right by Reading Elementary, but now we're on the very south end of Farmington. So do, my, my address now is fifteen forty-one South, one twenty East in Farmington. We, our family purchased Parish Square Shopping Center about two and a half years ago. It had been owned by a group out of state. It had kind of lost some of its management intensive, intensive, you know, focus. And so, we acquired the property and, as a resident, we've been here eighteen years. In fact, that's my boy, he's here for Ameribatch. So, we'd been here eighteen years and naturally had watched that shopping center go from, you know, the Arctic Circle and Blockbuster, and that it was fairly thriving to it became somewhat deteriorated, and, and the, the tenant mix wasn't very good. The, the revenue stream on the shopping center wasn't very good. I think that in connection with that, having fresh market there as a grocer didn't help the project. So, when we initially started having conversations with Associated Foods about the old Dick's, and then rebranding this store to Dick's, and really trying to revitalize the project, it got, got us quite interested in the shopping center. I had noticed, as, as we've watched that project for years, that the corner, you know, back in the late seventies and early eighties, and Commissioner Kerr certainly knows this, we, we didn't really build them very well. We built U-shaped shops, and Pages Lane is a classic example, where the tanning salon is by Rogers. So we'd build these U-shaped shops and end up with enormous corner spaces with no frontage. And so what we have inherited over here is where the old quilting shop was, right in the corner by where we, you know, we put Autozone. We have four thousand one hundred and, I think, thirty-two square feet with a door for frontage. It's thirty-six inches of frontage. Thirty-six inches of frontage. I've been doing retail commercial leasing for over twenty years. You just can't, and Commissioner Kerr, you know, I mean, you do it too. You can't build a project like that and have it work. So, a couple of years ago, when the prior owner had the property, he, in order to make the, the numbers work, what he agreed to do was to put a CrossFit gym in there. So he found a couple of guys that would operate it on his behalf, and they started a CrossFit gym. That CrossFit gym is operated now, the term was three years, their lease has just expired, and they're moving to Craig Salmon's project on the west side of the freeway, where, interestingly, we lost the Kona Karate Studio to the same project. High ceilings, lots of open space, so, you know, they can, they can do more in there rather than having a fourteen-foot-high ceiling. With CrossFit leaving, it's, if you remember, that property, that space had been empty for a considerable amount of time before we put CrossFit in there, despite some pretty intense leasing efforts. So as I've gone around, I work with Cushman-Awake Field, a commercial brokerage in Salt Lake. As I've gone around to other commercial brokers that work specifically in retail, and I've asked them, and we've marketed this like crazy to find a replacement tenant, what do we put there? The answer that I get consistently is a CrossFit gym. And when I tell them that we had a CrossFit gym and they're leaving, the next answer I get from everybody was what we've thought of all along, was, put some climate-controlled storage in there. You have a dock on the back. It's a large space, have it be a key card access or a code. And then on the interior of the space, just build some small five-by-five to maybe five-by-eight size units on the interior, so that people that have technical files, you know, small attorney's offices or insurance agents or, you know, gosh, we just had that application about these empty nester-type residential units. They may not want to go downstairs to take their files, but they might be willing to just go and throw it, you know, where they've got a dock on the back of a building, so you can put your Christmas tree and some of those types of items, just for some convenience. A couple of issues that we have over there as well, that I think this might help with. And by the way, Corey's comments are very valid, and, and yours too, Mr. Hershey. I fear as, and even though we're a quarter a mile into Farmington, we still shop here, we're still pretty much residents of this city. And, and I think that we have to be unbelievably careful to not put a blanket approval on an entire zone and end up with internal self-storage everywhere we have a commercial high zone, and run retail out. Number one, it affects the tax base for the city, and we don't, I don't want to see that. Number two, it wouldn't look good. And, and I think it would change the nature of Centerville. That's not at all what our intent is. In fact, I would be willing, and I don't know how in the world you write this, but to, to limit it to simply our two corner spaces where I don't have frontage. That's the only area that that would make sense for us, and we'd be willing to accept a restriction like that within the zone. I don't know how, how you write, and Corey, I think that's a great comment, that it's going to have to be very carefully worded, so that it, it doesn't impact the city in a negative way. But we, we end up over there with the dance studio and, you know, a lot of moms are coming in, they go hit the grocery store, then they do the loop through the U-shaped shops, pick the kids up or drop them off, pick up a couple of pizzas at Little Caesar's and move on. In fact, just an FYI, that's the, in the top nine percent in the nation in, in store volume at Little Caesar's. That's how much volume they do out of that store. So even though we had Arctic Circle that did pretty well, and then a number of failed businesses, Little Caesar's was a home run, and they just renewed their lease, so I think they'll keep doing that. they'll keep doing that. But parking is an issue over there. And I think this is one way to solve the problem. Some of our worst parking problems have come from the CrossFitters that don't want to walk more than 30 feet to go and work out for an hour. I mean, figure that out, right?
They're the same way it calls you.
Yeah.
They complain that they can't be 30 feet from the door.
I know, and I just will never figure that out. Walk another 50 feet.
They park as far away as they could.
So parking is one of the issues. I think this solves a problem for us. Our parking ratio certainly is going to go down if we were able to work this use. The other thing is the back of that project doesn't get utilized very well. We have trucks that go through there and then I dump 80% of Centerville City's residential garbage through our dumpsters, I think, because people are back there dumping their trash all the time. Okay? I think it solves a problem that way because we'll at least have some action back there. There's another element, the traffic flow has improved because we don't have all those CrossFitters coming in and going out. I don't think that the city wants to see vacancy in, really, we have the gateway to the city with Target and Home Depot and everything, but if you think of the four corners of Centerville, it's really Parish and Main, which is right where this project is. And that's why we just approved Wells Fargo to go through and repaint and do their new signage branding and, I mean, they're just on the end of a lease from 1976 and ready to extend. But I think that it eliminates a problem and fills space that was vacant. Let's see, I talked about the way properties developed. The other thing that I think is something we have to consider is with the millennials booming in population, we've seen the need for residential growth in multifamily. When we recently moved, we talked with our builder and the builder, as I commented, I said, "Why do you build your pantry so small?" And he said, "Because nobody uses a pantry anymore." He says, "We build homes for a lot of millennials. They don't care what their stove is, their range is, they don't really care anything about their pantry. They care about their microwave and their fridge." And millennials are looking for convenience, simplistic lifestyle and ease. And I think that this use caters to a millennial population as well as an aging population that wants some convenience for storage. And interesting, we've developed some projects for years and this is a use that I probably would not have typically wanted in one of our projects. But as we've seen, you know, Cubex has just built a big project on 33rd South in Salt Lake City and it's a really nice-looking building. It's in a retail area, but it doesn't have the look of a traditional self-storage unit type project. And when I think of that, we store some stuff out at Aspen Spring Storage, just to the south of the roundabout over here on the west side of Centerville. And it's always dusty inside our unit, it's dirty, it's kind of inconvenient, especially when it's 100 degrees to go out there and then go into a really hot metal storage unit. I think this provides something for the members of the city. As I've talked to our tenants about it, because I wanted to make sure they were comfortable with this, most of the comments from our tenants have been, "Yeah, we'll probably store some stuff in there." I mean, the State Farm guy, he's bursting at the seams, "Oh, my gosh, if I can get that for like industrial-type rates, we'll store some stuff in there." And lastly, I think it does provide a convenience to the locals, to the residents. So that's what our intent is. We are willing to accept an approval with restrictions on specific space in the project and I think that's important. And again, I don't know how to write that into this because this is a zone text amendment, which is broad-scoped to the entire zone. I don't know how we write that. I've even thought maybe we'd put a small moving retail space in the front that sold boxes and packaging materials or something to create it with the appearance of retail, although I do have some hesitation because that requires staffing 24, well, you know, within standard business hours in that corner space, which would economically make the deal a little, pretty difficult for us to do. So I'm open to any questions if you have any. We're not storage guys, we're retail guys. That's what we develop, but I think this is a use that we've cert, I mean, you know, you look at what in the old Boondock space, is it Bukus? Bukus, right, in Farmington, the old Kmart.
Old Kmart.
Yeah, extra spaces, managing that for some guys, you know, that certainly is happening. That would be a competitor. They would do it, they're pros, I mean, those guys are huge. But I think we would, being local with such limited square footage, I think we would keep it pretty full. So anyway, I'm rambling, so any questions?
So you want, so the back would be utilized, the back corner would be utilized more than that, just that front door?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't think I would have people go in that front door at all. I think with that front door to ease the parking and the traffic flow, I think we would screen that window so that it would actually appear like it was part of AutoZone space. And then in the back, we have that dock back there with a key card or some type of access like that to provide access to our people. We also can limit it. For example, where we store some stuff at Aspen Spring Storage, I can't get in there after, I think it's nine at night, and I can't get in before seven. I know there was some concern about the impact on the neighbors to the north. And in order to limit that impact, we would do the same thing. We would lock out certain hours.
Have you walked through Lock-It-Up self-storage in Bountiful?
I have not.
That's, that has large self-storage outdoor, but then an interior location that has the air conditioning as well. Yeah, across, right across from Smith's.
Yeah.
And we actually used that at one point too, for just a temporary thing, and it, you do walk in a door, but then you can go back and you can also access it from the back as well.
The design that we have thought about, and I'm trying to work that through with our contractor, is we do have a little back room that sits right off of that back-loading area where the dock is. Our thought there was that you come in, kind of stage your product, whatever it is that you're storing. I mean, I don't think we'll see anything bigger than what could come in on a hand-truck, a dolly. But then we would have kind of a 360-degree square walk pathway that would go through the space with units, you know, five-by-five to five-by-eight on the perimeter and then in the middle section, some of similar-sized units. So I think it's kind of what you're talking about.
Out of curiosity, I'm assuming that you've looked at the number of other self-storage facilities in the area. Apart from the Lock-It-Up in Bountiful, what other facilities are in the nearby area that provide the same service?
Just, all that I know of is with what you're talking about in Bountiful and then the one that's the old Kmart in Farmington, I know about that. I've heard that Cubex is trying to do something in Farmington. I don't know where they would do it or if anything has been approved. I do, I also know, I work with some guys that are pretty significant self-storage guys in our market. Some of them, you know, they founded extra space storage and they do other work mainly in Salt Lake County and Summit County, managing, trying to get approval in Summit County, right? They have said that there is an enormous demand for self-storage between Kaseville and North Salt Lake. That's the story that I'm getting and it's rate-based. And in fact, they also told me that I'm kind of nuts to do 4,000 feet. They said that if I don't do 100,000 feet, it's going to be kind of difficult to make it work economically, but I think it'll work. And I don't think you want 100,000 feet of that in Centerville right now. And as a former, barely, and pretty much resident, I don't know that I would want it either.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing on this. If there's anyone that would like to come and speak to this issue.
It's confusing. So I would like-
If you state your name for the record.
Logan Johnson, I live at 327 West, 650 North. I don't want to speak as to whether you should approve it or not or what zones that should be considered for approval or not, but there was two comments that I felt are really important. I want to reiterate the pressure that exists for these internal self-storage units in this geographic area. I work in real estate development and there's a lot of people that would build a lot of these throughout this kind of South Davis County area. And one of the biggest obstacles for them is it's not often required on the east side, which is where a lot of them want. The second item I wanted to talk to was, and this may not agree with staff's recommendation, is the conditional use permit, I think, might not be the best approach for this particular use. I feel like it sends a mixed signal, at least for me, and it's not as strong as of a barrier or control unit as I once thought it was. I would encourage you guys to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? No, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any response to those comments by the applicant?
Well, I'm concerned, Mr. Tate brought up the point that it's kind of the, if you make this a text amendment, it's really hard to say, well, you can only do it in corners where you have 36 inches of frontage. On the other hand, I'm, I think there's a lot of demand for something and for something like this, I've seen storage really pick up its appearance, so I don't think it's all that bad. I just noticed the one in Kmart that you mentioned, as I was driving by, just coming back from my cabin, I looked back and go, "Holy smoke, there's extra space storage." And it looked very nice and what they did, it was just a nice storefront, so I'm not adverse to it, but I think that if you make a zoning text amendment, it's going to be hard to say, well, we're going to limit it to his space for that corner or we almost have to make a decision that we're going to have it in our commercial zone.
Can we close the public hearing?
We are done with the public hearing.
Sorry, I had to sit here.
Yes, I did close it today.
So I guess in summary is, is this something that we want to open up the door and say, "You can have storage in commercial"? I mean, isn't that what you have to do?
Well, that was my initial concern reading through this thing. My first thought was literally Pages Lane and what would happen if you turned all of what was Dix and Rogers Memorial Theater and Joanne's into storage? It feels pretty vacant and lonely over there and I think that that would just continue to feel lonely and vacant because this doesn't, I think, bring the type of activity that you're looking for in a retail center, right? I mean, and I actually fear the pressure that were supposedly out there would quickly turn that into this continued type of thing.
That was exactly what I was thinking as I was listening to it. I thought if we could limit it just to these two store spaces, it makes total sense what you're saying, man, it works for your space. But if we do make this text code amendment and we're hearing that there's high demand and that people are telling you that, why are you doing so, so small of square footage? Do 100,000 square feet? That's exactly my concern. We're going to start seeing these things pop up all over the place in commercial high.
And I think, you know, we've talked about Pages Lane before, what do you do over there? And I think that the, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I would like to see something that is vibrant again. You know, it's been a long time since it's been vibrant over there and I don't know that this brings that vibrancy to it. I can appreciate certainly Mr. Tate's unique situation, but I do worry about the broad-brush approach and what could potentially happen over there if we were to allow this type of a thing.
And it's not just you, it's the city council and the planning commission coming together at the beginning of this year saying they want to address planning for Pages Lane. I mean, we've talked about that as one of our goals is to address that area. It's not that we, it is something that all residents, maybe not all, but I would say the vast majority of Centerville wants to see that revitalized as well, so.
But revitalized to what? I mean, you're not going to get retail over there.
Well-
Let's not get on a tangent, sorry, I'm just gonna-
But I think what we would like to see is something that's, first of all, going to actually help with a sales tax type of a thing, right? And correct me if I'm wrong, but you don't collect sales tax on storage, right? Do you?
Well, like I say-
But, so that's your tax-based thing, but then also just kind of that vibrancy. I don't know if you've been over there recently, but, you know, I drive by there a lot because I live over that way, but it's pretty lonely. It's pretty sad, you know? And I really do concern, my big concern is, of course, that if you were to just open it up carte blanche to everything, that it would just continue to be, you know, somebody might come in with the demand that we're hearing about and turn all of those three spaces that I talked about, which is probably quite a high, you know, large amount of square footage into something like this, and then it just doesn't change what we have over there, it's just still-
Corey, is there something that we could do short of a code text amendment that would still allow Mr. Tate to do what he's considering? Because in a vacuum, I'm generally fine with what he proposes. I think it's a good use of his space, but I don't want to open the Pandora's Box on a large risk. I know, I'm asking to have my cake and eat it too.
Spot zoning.
I want to not do spot zoning.
Let me write down that full order right now.
I can have compassion for, it is really hard to lease those corner spaces and nobody, I mean, but you pull up the map on that, there's a lot of space around that back. There's a lot of space around the back where people could access that space for what he's doing. It's not frontage space, but it would be ideal for something like this. So I agree that that would be a great use.
Just for what I'm hearing, let me back up to answer that particular question last. The two discussions I'm hearing is the concern about the Pages Lane area, which I think is a valid discussion because that's a CH zone district. You know, I think that's a matter of timing at this point because I anticipate that the redevelopment of the Pages in the new direction would probably not maintain it retail anyway. But I do agree with the point is, is you've got a large vacant building that could be easily converted to that, and now what do you do? So I understand that. That's, I think, an issue of timing because I do think the zoning over there would change significantly at some point in time and that's a goal. And so the idea of maintaining a CH zone there is probably potentially off the plate in the future. And so I think that's a potential timing issue, but I can't say that for positive because we haven't even talked to the stakeholders that own that. So, but I think intuitively, commercial retail and returning it to the vibrancy of the old days of Pages Lane is not there. So you're right, a call center, could it go there? Could a large warehouse like this go there? Absolutely, those could be potential reuses. So, but I do think there's a possibility of changing the zoning, so this may not be the right time to make that decision in the CH zone because that might change. The other question you're asking is, is there something we can do? It's pretty difficult to try to say a particular piece of property or a couple of particular pieces of property that are zoned this, but others that are outside of this, this is what we can add to it. Now, just being theoretical to it, that's what you use your overlay zones to do. That's what you use plan development overlay to do. Those are the kind of things that you allow flexible zoning on. And is there value in a plan development overlay? Is there value in a commercial overlay that adds uses that you would put in another area? Theoretically, yes. But I think that's a lot larger discussion and argument to say, we're going to implement an overlay, let's use our plan development overlay, we're getting something better than our traditional zoning. Okay, so we create a new overlay that adds certain specific uses to that zone. Parish is kind of our four corners, as it was said. And, you know, so I see the underutilized argument, but I also see the community argument of what we're trying to maintain. And so I think it's difficult to try to parse it down and say, these two particular suites look really great for this use, how do we legally parse that out just for that? And I think that's really a difficult thing to do.
I'll tell you what Draper did in a very similar situation, they actually created a new zone.
Did Draper do that?
Just a zone that was a commercial zone that was specifically created to allow for climate-controlled storage.
Yeah, and you could do that. And then in the end, the argument would be is how does Parish Lane commercial area bode well with that change? So to me, climate-controlled storage, even though it's very specific, I would, I think it would be a difficult debate to say, we're going to do a new zone just so we add climate-controlled storage to Parish when we have other values along Parish that compete with that. So it's a difficult-
Now, when you say we have other values that compete with that, articulate that.
You have your Parish Lane gateway design standards and so now you have a whole new set of expectations. It's to be pedestrian-oriented component to each development, landscaping component to each development, and the current shopping center there is non-complying to those current standards of today.
Is not compliant?
Is, we call it other non-conformity. Other non-conformity. Uses there, it's okay, other than the climate control. But our issues of landscaping, building design, this shopping center was built prior to that, so that other type of non-conformity exists. And our hope in the future for Parish is that the shopping center would be attritioned at some point in time. And, you know, whether that's, I mean, obviously Dix moving over there creates a new vibrancy, so, you know, should this, the argument would be, should this area be maintained in the Parish Lane gateway area? But right now- But right now, the competing interest is, is that that shopping center does not meet the design criteria of the Parish Lane gateway standards.
So, the reality is, I mean, for Associated Foods to make the investment they've made in the Dick's, they've got to see that as a twenty-five, the twenty, twenty-five year...
Yeah, I think there's definitely new life in there.
They put lots of money into that, and, I mean, you're going to see, unless our whole, what, wave of shopping changes substantially, and who knows, gee...
Yeah, you're, you're making the argument as should that shopping center be in the Parish gate, gateway area? Right now it is, but there is a potential argument to debate that, should it be?
Well, you can't make that argument, I mean, it's there, you can't say, say if it shouldn't be, it's still a non-conformity.
Well, if you took it out of it, and just left it as a CH zone, then you would eliminate the gateway non-conformities. And I'm not talking about uses, well, it's a little bit structured, but I'm not talking about uses, I'm talking about other non-conformities that we talk about, parking, landscaping, buffering, building designs, so forth.
Well, is there a way you can get an overlay and have him mitigate those concerns? I mean, the problem is, the, where they would be entering is around the back that is almost never ever seen.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue you could say is, let's go study an overlay specific to that area of the city, and determine whether there's value in that overlay.
But if you do that overlay, what, what would prevent, you know, years down the road, maybe Dick's decides to move somewhere else again?
You'd be giving, you'd be giving up that. That's the competing interests.
I just see it as a real slippery slope, broadening this out to commercial and, commercial high, or commercial high and commercial very high. We don't, we don't, I don't want to see Centerville turned into the storage unit capital of Davis County. We've got a lot of pressure on us from both ends. As, as Logan pointed out, I think there is high demand for this, but is that in the best interest of our city? And what, what this does is, I think it creates a, an expectation that any vacant building, any vacant lot in a commercial high, commercial very high zone is a candidate for a storage facility.
And there are a lot of them, I mean, as I think about it, it's not just Page's Lane. That was my first concern, but I mean, there are a lot of store, big box stores, or stores attached to big box stores in the Parish Lane area that could be really prime area for that. And if there is a lot of demand, I could see...
Would it be possible to do something, and I don't know, the first thing that pops in my mind is along the lines of a liquor license? So you have so many licenses available based on areas, so you could say, we have thirty thousand square feet available for the city, and you get your license, and that might help with the corner areas that are particularly troublesome?
Well, just, just a cultural thing, liquor licensing is controversial.
Okay, well, we don't have, we don't have to call it liquor licenses.
Now, now let's go into land uses not associated with that, and yeah, I, I think you, I think there, there's potential red flags from, from that approach.
What about the, what about the idea that Mr. Tate floated? That allow self-storage, but only if they have a thirty-six inch or less doorway to access the facilities, right? Like frontage.
Some, some of the things, and this, this is where you could tap into more descriptive concepts and ideas if you wanted to go there. You know, our commercial zones regulate ten thousand in the medium zone, fifty thousand in the high zone, above that is a CUP and the CVH. So you could start toying with sizes. Now, I think you have a competing interest in CH. Fifty thousand square feet's quite a bit of space, so the justification that climate-controlled has a differing square footage at five thousand square feet. I think you start toying in, in, in balance in, could you do it? Yes. But you, you start creating tension with, well, I can do a fifty thousand square foot this, but I can only do a five thousand square foot that, and that's half of a ten thousand square foot in a CEM zone. So, you know, I heard, can I just do those two corner buildings and limit it to that? Well, we could create that, but then there's the tension with the ten thousand square feet, fifty thousand square feet. You know, now I'm in a fifty thousand square foot zone, but this particular use is only five thousand square feet. Can you do it? Yes, but you, you add, as Randy would say, greater complexity, that's his favorite word, greater complexity into the process. And if you want to explore that, we can explore it and then have an evaluation on that. But I, I do think it lends itself to inequitable decisions with other uses.
I think we're just trying to bounce some creative ideas around.
And, and, and size restriction is one way to try to, to look at it. I, I just have to tell you, staff, and I'm sure Lisa's uncomfortable, when you start parsing out individual uses in a same zone, and saying that they don't have those same rights, it gets...
And that was going to be my initial comment, because I think a lot of the presentation was a specific location, but again, remember, with text amendments, you're looking at a zone, and we are by law supposed to provide all similarly situated properties the same rights. And so that's where we've drawn the line in commercial zoning and, you know, our different zones.
Well, let me, let me throw this out, in, in connection with what you just said and a couple of other comments that have been made, and that is, maybe we have, in the non-conforming aspect of that particular development, a, a, enough of a difference to create some sort of either new zone or overlay zone that would allow for this. I mean, it is different than the rest of the Gateway District. Now, there are some other pieces that are a little bit different as well. And so, if you create that overlay zone, you probably have to extend it to other non-conforming areas.
Yeah, we would evaluate where those boundaries should be if we create a new specific high zone for the Parish area.
But the only thing I can see that, that's different in, in the, the Dick's area there, Mr. Tate's area, is that it is non-conforming, and the rest of the Parish Lane is, is conforming. And maybe that gives us a, an opportunity to be a bit more creative.
And we certainly could explore that larger issue of an overlay, and the values of that overlay, and then the, the positives and, and pros and cons of what you're giving up or not giving up by changing that.
What properties would, would be affected by that, similar to situated properties?
But I do think that would take a directive from the planning commission to go that direction, and then parsing out the workload to get that directive done.
Well, so, let me take that one step further. It's not a question of just what's there now, but what could become that? I mean, we talked about, I mean, so, what if one of our big retailers here went dark? Would that bring that into that scenario? Would that make them non-conforming? Or, or all the other retail buildings down Parish Lane conforming? Is it a function of the building itself, or is it a function of the use? Or is it a function of what's showing on the front sign, or...
He's talking about non-conforming as far as design standards.
Right.
The overlay is specific to an area.
Yeah, you would put an overlay specific to a geographic area.
So that if a dark, if a store went dark, they'd automatically qualify and could move, move into the overlay.
Well, and how did they do it in Draper? Did, did you like the way they did it in Draper, or would that not apply to us?
It predated my involvement. I'm not sure what went into that, but they actually created a special zone, which is... But it wasn't, it was, it was actually part of another commercial zone, and they just carved it out.
And I think that's a value judgment you're making. Is there enough thought patterns to say that particular CH area of our Parish Lane is significantly worth the evaluation of changing the zone and revisioning that is a zoning district and the uses associated with that zoning district?
So, Corey, whether, whether he could do some changes to his property that would make it closer to a conforming zone, i.e. different landscaping? I mean, that would give us, give a kind of a quid pro quo, I don't know whether you want to say that in this context, but that we get an exchange for that, that it gets it closer to the gateway design standards? These are some middle ground there that would motivate him to, you know, bring up the, whatever we perceive to be the gap?
Well, I think that's what, as an applicant, if you were to table this and move that direction, you'd certainly have to decide how much an incentive it is to stay, you know, engaged in that dialogue. But certainly, if we came back with a new overlay zone, we're going to have an evaluation of whether you give up the Parish Lane design guidelines or not, whether we implement a new set or not, whether we just live with the existing standards of a CH zone that's not in a Parish Lane gateway, and, and then if there's desire to look at offsets, we could evaluate that in the design criteria. And then he would comment in the public process, saying, you look, I, I know the direction you're going, but just for this particular item, it wouldn't be worth my time to upgrade that. And, and you could comment on whether you would continue pursuing that overlay or different district in of itself. But I think that's a larger debate and a larger issue, and probably take you a couple of meetings to go through and take staff a couple of different reiterations before those meetings to, to study that issue and ride it out. Could we do it? Yes. Does it substitute other priorities? Yes. But job security is always fun for staff.
Well, I, I for one would like to study a, a potential overlay zone concept here. I, I think that may be the only, the only way that we can really adequately address this. And it may not work out, but I think it's, it's worth taking a look at.
Yeah, the, the thing I think we would want to discuss with the applicant is, does, is, is there a willingness for him to delay his petition to you, to have those conversations, because it is his petition? Or would he rather you make a decision on his petition and then take that recommendation up to the city council? So I think you ought to have that dialogue.
Well, let's ask the question. Mr. Tate, could you come up? We'll have you speak on the record on this one, and I think it's a fair question. Thank you, Corey. So the question is, are you willing to delay this long enough for us to study a possible rezone or overlay zone on the property that might get us to where there's a, this use would be allowed? Or would you rather us take action and...
I don't want you to take action. Let's, let's, yeah, work on it, and I appreciate that you're willing to consider it and to discuss it. I, I wanted to comment that there, we don't perceive that because the square footage is so small, that there is a lot of revenue that's going to come from this. This really is to plug a hole and solve a vacancy issue that predates my time in Centerville. So, if there's any, if there's any conversation about us doing considerable landscape and building improvements and parking improvement, there, there's just no way, it's not going to pencil, the, the funds won't be there to make that happen. We, really, if, if there's some way that we can come up with a plan that makes this work, otherwise, I think that that's what we would love to, to have you discuss that possibility. One idea, I know that there are moratoriums in a lot of cities on pawn shops, on, you know, the check cashing guys and payday lenders. I don't know if there's something that could be done along the same line where you limit this to a certain number. And, and I know that, Corey, as you mentioned, and I know that you have some concern about that. In our leases and shopping center agreements, a lot of times we have restrictions on certain uses over specific square footages. And, and maybe that's what you do, is that if the lot sizes, whatever acres, you can only do self-storage in this zone up to X number of square feet. We have that written, and, I mean, that shopping center over there has restricted uses all over the place. I can't put a bakery there, because Dick's has a bakery. So they control, in fact, it's Albertson's controls our ability to put a bakery in. Great Harvest wanted to locate there, I couldn't do it. So there are a handful of restrictions like that that we already endure. So my thought is, maybe we could put something in an overlay that restricts specific square footage, that, that's an idea. My last comment, and this is off, this is a tangent, as you were talking. Page's Lane, as a longtime resident here and a longtime retail development guy, I would love to see Page's get revitalized, but it is not going to be retail. It will not be retail. I work with retailers, you know, grocery guys and food people and, you know, small shop people, and they are not going there. It's just not going to happen, and hopefully the city can find a way to have some revitalization through other uses. We would love to see it as well, but I, I just wanted to share that with you, that it's just not, it will not, it's not going to happen. Any other questions for me? Chairman?
How can we get Great Harvest there?
Well, yeah, because Dick's...
That's what I want.
So do, so did I. In fact, I even thought about opening one myself, and getting a franchise rights for it, but I can't do a bakery. You enjoy those restrictions, right? Thanks. And thanks for listening and, and considering this.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we table this matter with a directive to the staff to investigate the possibility of an overlay zone for those areas of the CH, or the, the commercial high zone that currently, along Parish Lane, that are not currently in full performance with the divine, design standards.
Would you also add in a potential new district discussion?
The which?
A new district rather than just over...
Yes, and also investigate a new district.
And what about also some of the things that Kevin was talking about, and Mr. Tate was talking about with size?
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll come back with you on what we think, and then you can respond to us.
Great.
Well, that's my motion.
I second.
You moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote, Commissioner David.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. You can join us now, Commissioner Johnson. Didn't fall asleep there, did you? I think we're down to the, the all-important Community Development Director's report. However, before we get to that, I was reviewing some, some planning commission minutes from a jurisdiction that resides in Davis County. I, I, I thought there was one process in that, in the minutes, that was reflected in the minutes, that I thought would be perhaps helpful to us. And that is that at the beginning of every meeting, in that, in their case, they had a report from the Community Development Director as to actions that had been taken by the city council on recommendations made by the planning commission. I, I really kind of like that idea. I mean, we can look through those minutes, although I oftentimes don't spend a lot of time looking through them, but I, I'm not sure when some of the things that we do here actually hit the floor of the council. And I think it might be nice to have just five minutes or so where the Development Director can give us some, some report on...
On land use items that you've looked at?
I don't think, I would put it at the beginning of the meeting, just because I think we may get discussing things and lose focus on what we're...
But add it as part of the director's report.
But maybe add it to your report, and just take a few minutes to say, well, last week, the council did such and such with your recommendation, and this is why.
I, I really like that idea, because, for example, I was kind of bowled over that they didn't take our CUP, well, not, not...
ADU?
ADU, that they kind of just dropped.
Well, they tabled that for like eight months. They kept tabling it, and tabling it, and tabling it, and tabling it.
I was surprised, I thought it was kind of their impetus, they wanted us to consider it, and then all of a sudden, when it just got totally dropped, I was, I was really surprised. So, I, I agree with the chairman that we, it'd be nice to hear, so we don't waste our time, and next time we say, well, we don't want to waste our time doing this, it's going to turn out like that, but...
Similar to that, to your comment, when I went to the Land Use 101 Training, which I would highly recommend for all of you, it's coming up again. They gave some ideas for some things that help the public and help planning commissioners and everyone understand. At some, they suggested a report of action that doesn't replace the minutes, but it summarizes the action that was taken. So, they put that, some cities put that right at the very beginning of their, of their agenda, so... So they put that, some cities put that right at the very beginning of their, of their, um, agenda, so...
Explain.
Actions taken...
Actions taken, report of action or in the minutes, they'll say, report of action.
Whose action is what we're trying to get to?
The planning, the, so, so there's two different places. In the meeting minutes, you could say, instead of having everyone read the entire meeting minutes, which are very important and nice, sometimes they have a report of action at the very beginning so that people can say, the Planning Commission approved or recommended...
So you're talking about minutes, a report of actions in the minutes?
And then, related to what he was saying, you could have a report of action at the beginning of the agenda meeting that says the report of action that the City Council did in relation to our recommendation. Does that make sense? So two different areas where you can add it. So it's just easier for us to access...
You're talking about a report of action of the previous meeting, the minutes of the meeting of what the commission did? I mean, we have to have, we need to have a discussion. The city recorder and policies with the minutes, we need to have that discussion. So if, if there's something you want, I think you need to first communicate with the city recorder and look at those policies for the minutes taken and what they include into them. Because there's a direct procedure and costs associated with minutes. So, I, I, if you're listing it in the minutes, I think that's a discussion that you can have with the city recorder, then come back to, to the commission and discuss that if you want that a part of your minutes, that you understand what those procedures and policies are. If you want a report of action of prior councils, actions on your decisions...
Yes.
That's easy just to put into the Community Development Director's Report.
Right.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and, and I think the, the report of action that you're suggesting in the commission minutes could simply be as, it could be as simple as stating the proposal...
An approval, yes. That's exactly what it is. Super simple, just so that it's just a quick look. And, and then if we need to look back at, at our minutes and want to figure out what we did or when we did it, it's pretty easy to find. The second thing, sort of just because we're on this, um, they also encouraged cities to put items on the agenda as to whether they are administrative, legislative, quasi-judicial, and, and rules of procedure. So people understand that when we are approving a CUP or something, we have, it's a administrative or it's a, you know what I'm saying? So that they understand that sometimes we can't take their public comment, public clamor into consideration.
Well, there's, I don't know if we have, we have the meeting procedures and those descriptions that are available for the public on here. I'd be really hesitant to try to put all that kind of information on an agenda because what we have to do with the agendas and who we have to send to and we have limited space on.
Right.
And so, you know, if you were to just say, you know, like, the commission business here, a public hearing here, we could put in per ends administrative action.
Yes, that's what...
Leave it at that. But to describe the rules of all of that on an agenda, I think would be verbose.
Yeah, I actually read two lines and the rules of procedure just says posted. So that was kind of relate, unrelated, but yeah, what you were saying with just putting it...
But we can reformat to say administrative decision. I mean, most of them are going to be administrative decisions, but like the climate-controlled here with various zones would be a legislative decision. So we could, we could tag it with labels on the agenda. I just would be concerned about trying to put all the descriptors of what that means to the public.
Anyway, those are just ideas that they gave us, part of what they gave us.
Always wanting to improve and change. Thank you. Turn the rest of the time over to you, Corey.
You have a meeting next time. Unfortunately, as we're going along, I don't know which items are staying or which items are going. I have been in dialogue on your zone map amendments. I have not received an answer back. Current staff dialogue with them is to hold off and wait for the council to make a general plan policy change before we bring that back to you. So that would likely drop off, but it was listed because I haven't received feedback yet. And then you have Youngblood Conceptual Plan. I think they're trying to reverse direction and go with their actual build a building. So that's why it'll come back to you as conceptual, because that's different than what they proposed originally. The storage, um, there's dialogue between the owner and the contractor. The contractor is the assigned representative. He asked for a delay because, um, there's not agreement with the owner yet and him on that site. And the bar tile storage, this is where they're doing amendments with those three storage buildings. They actually hired some people and got some professional plans. So we're past the, past the point of trying to use a conceptual plan for their discussion. So that'll be good, and I think that one's pretty much on the agenda.
Yep, it is.
What do you, what do you notice in those last three things?
Storage. Did I say something about becoming the storage capital?
We could add that to the food, the fast food capital title.
Thank you, Corey. Thank you, everyone. Enjoyed our discussions and debate tonight. I move we adjourn. Second, can you post? All in favor?
Aye.